Okay, let's call this village board meeting to order. It's January 26, 2015. This is board meeting number 3,089. Mr. Flynn, would you please call the roll?
Meyer.
Here.
Abernathy.
Present.
Semple.
Here.
Boss.
Here.
Kim.
Here.
Sullivan.
Very good. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Great to see everyone here. Great attendance this evening, and we have some presentations and some swearing-in ceremonies, and welcome, everyone. Glad you could make it. First item on the agenda here would be the approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the Board of Trustees' special meeting minutes from December 15, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Kim. Discussion? My clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Flynn?
Boss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Semple.
Present.
Sullivan.
Very good. Motion carries. That takes us to the next item. I need a motion to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes from January 12, 2015.
So moved.
Motion by Boss.
Second.
Second by Abernathy. Discussion? Okay, Mr. Flynn, please take the roll.
Boss.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Present.
Semple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Okay. That's it for the approval of minutes. At this point is the time where we have public commentary. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the village board at this time? If you'd like to, please raise your hand. No? Okay. We'll close the floor then and move on to presentations and awards. Tonight's a very special evening. It is our annual diversity award evening, and to kick things off, I would like to introduce to you the chairman of the Human Relations Commission, Mr. John Reimer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Village Board. Thank you to all who were in attendance. My name's John Reimer. I have the privilege of being the chairman of the Human Relations Commission. I want to first just introduce my other commission members, I think most of whom are out in the lobby. If you'll wave or stand, Karen Schuman, Jane Siegel, Maria Sanchez, Jesus Aguirre, there's Jesus is here, and Carol Smith. I don't think Carol was able to make it tonight. Tonight, we have the privilege of presenting two awards. The diversity award, this is the fifth year that we have presented a diversity award, is celebrating individuals or groups who initiate programs, or advance awareness, or make a difference in social and cultural issues and items for the community of Mundaline. So the awards tonight will be presented to both an individual and an organization. They were nominated. There was an open forum, advertisements out. The whole community had the opportunity to nominate individuals or groups. We received a number of nominations, and we unanimously, as a commission, felt the organization and individual who will be awarded tonight were worthy of the award. What's the award criteria? Well, the nominees must either live in, go to school in, or work in Mundaline, and they have either started a program and support it that creates awareness of diversity, demonstrates peaceful problem-solving methods, promotes social or cultural awareness with building of tolerance and understanding between groups. This could be a school, a community group, including churches, or nonprofits, or sports clubs, businesses, or residents. So the mayor is going to read the proclamation for our two award recipients tonight. Mayor?
Very good. Thank you. All right. All right, this is a mayoral proclamation recognizing the diversity award recipient for 2015, Kumgong Martial Arts Academy. Whereas the village board believes in the importance of celebrating the actions of individuals and organizations for extraordinary efforts in recognizing and embracing diversity by annually accepting nominations and selecting recipients of a diversity award, and whereas their Human Relations Commission received and reviewed nominations for potential diversity award recipients, and whereas Ms. Deborah Sebick nominated Kumgong Martial Arts Academy, a Mundaline business dedicated to promoting tolerance in the community, and whereas the academy places a strong emphasis on respect, self-esteem, self-confidence, anti-bullying, cultural awareness, and self-control, not only at the academy, but also at home and school, and whereas the academy demonstrates a strong ability to create and follow through with projects and programs, and strives to contribute to the Mundaline community through charity, education, and mentorship, and whereas at their December 16, 2014 special meeting, the Human Relations Commission compared the nomination with the diversity award criteria and found the nomination meets the criteria outlined in the program, and whereas the Human Relations Commission unanimously recommends Kumgong Martial Arts Academy for the diversity award in the organization category to the village board. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Mundaline, Lake County, Illinois, that Kumgong Martial Arts Academy is to be recognized for demonstrating leadership and embodying excellence in creating programs that celebrate diversity, promote tolerance, and build cultural understanding. So, the two owners that are here, Mike Malotnikov and Chris Floodstrom, can you come on up and accept this? And I'm sure that the other trustees will want to shake your hand as well. Congratulations. Thank you very much. There you go. You can come over, and if you want to say something, you certainly can. If you were... Go this way. Yeah.
First, we're very, very honored to receive this award. Celebrating diversity is a very important element of the education at KMAA, and, you know, seeing as we're a business in the United States, teaching martial arts that come from Korea and Brazil, Japan, and the Philippines, all with their own very unique histories, it's... the concept of diversity really resides with us. Our student body is incredibly diverse as well, but diversity really hits home the hardest considering the age of our typical student. We're an institution that teaches martial arts, and when teaching these, we need to understand that we have to teach character along with the kicks and the punches so that we know and can ensure that our students never misuse these things. One of the core principles that we have to teach is respect, and not a selective respect to the people in the academy, but a universal and mutual respect with their peers and anyone else that they're around. And with their age, we have to understand that bullying is a very prevalent issue, especially in our society. Typically, bullying stems from a failure to understand others, and that bullying is targeted towards people who are not like that bully. In these cases, any type of diversity is rejected rather than embraced, and it's very difficult to overcome. So the better we understand others and accept them, differences and all, the better chance we have to combat bullying and intolerance and bigotry. By embracing this diversity, we can walk together for that cause, and KMAA is very, very proud to be part of a community that embraces diversity and welcomes it. So, thank you.
The next award, this is a mayoral proclamation recognizing the diversity award recipient. The individual category would be... goes to Gretchen Garza, and I'm going to skip to the whereas. Mr. Cameron Nystrom, Assistant Principal at Carl Sandberg Middle School, nominated Ms. Gretchen Garza, teacher at Carl Sandberg Middle School, an individual dedicated to promoting cross-cultural relations in the village of Mundaline, and whereas among a few of Ms. Garza's accomplishments are her leadership with the bilingual team, her efforts to engage Latino families, and her strong, effective, and impactful leadership at her school and in the Mundaline community, and whereas at their December 16, 2014 special meeting, the Human Relations Commission compared the nomination with the diversity award criteria and found the nomination meets the criteria outlined in the program, and whereas the Human Relations Commission unanimously recommends Ms. Gretchen Garza for the diversity award in the individual category to the village board. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Mundaline, Lake County, Illinois, that Ms. Gretchen Garza is to be recognized for demonstrating leadership and embodying excellence in creating programs that celebrate diversity, promote tolerance, and build cultural understanding. Ms. Gretchen Garza, come on up.
It's only because of God's love for me and the love of my family and friends that I'm able to love other people, and from my Grandpa Otto on my father's side to my Grandma Erica on my Swedish grandmother and my mother's side, who taught me the value of the importance of loving people, that I'm able to be here tonight, and I have representatives of some of my former students from when I was the assistant teacher in the summer migrant programs over 40 years ago, which is really sad. I was 16-years-old. Sandra was a baby, and here she sits in the front row, and to when I taught at Fremont School and I worked with the migrant students, I have a representative here, Sandra, and Irma from Prairie View and from Mundaline. It's just really neat to be able to be here tonight, and that I'm able to have the privilege of still doing what I absolutely love doing at Carl Sandberg. They've given me that opportunity, and they've given me a lot of freedom to just take the ball and go with it, wherever it goes, helping anybody I can with whatever I can. And I get to be... I get to be privileged to be a part of, and the joy that I receive from doing this. So I just appreciate this award tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that moves... Takes us to public hearings. There are none this evening. Under the mayor's report, I have a few motions and a few other items. Let's start with the... We have a few folks that need to be sworn in tonight, and so we'll begin with... I'll need a motion to appoint Luis Fuentes to the Human Relations Commission with a term expiration date of April 30, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by trustee Kim. Discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I'm so pleased that Luis is going to be stepping up and being on a commission, because I've been trying to convince him to be more involved in our community for a while, and I think that we will really enjoy having his leadership. I'm so pleased that he is finding the time to do this.
Okay. Here, here, I've been after him for a few months, more than a few months, and so when he said yes, I jumped on it, and that's why we're doing two at once here tonight. So, anyway, anyone else? Okay. Mr. Flynn, please call the roll.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
And...
Me.
Boss. Sorry. Thought I was forgetting someone.
Motion carries. Mr. Fuentes, come on up.
Did we already pause her?
No.
Right this way, Luis. Could you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Luis Fuentes, I, Luis Fuentes, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Human Relations Commission, according to the best of my ability. Thank you. I will sign it.
When you do the roll, when you do the hoes. All right. Okay, takes us to the second swearing-in ceremony for tonight. I need a motion to appoint James Kupick to the police pension board with a term expiration date of April 30, 2015. That's right.
So moved.
Huh?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kim, second by Abernathy.
It's Kupick.
What?
You said his name wrong.
Okay. All right. Discussion?
Do you want to explain why we're appointing for three months?
Oh, why we're appointing for three months? Well, that's... He's taking... Yeah, Mr. Fuentes, or no, Mr. Kupick. Kupick. Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Kupick is taking the place of a member that resigned, okay, for whatever, personal reasons, whatever, and that left an opening that was between now and April 15, and so that's it.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, Mr. Flynn, please take the roll.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Motion carries. Come on up. Where is he? There he is.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, James Kupick.
I, James Kupick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Police Pension Board Member.
The duties of the Office of Police Pension Board Member.
According to...
According to the best of my ability.
Very good. Thank you. You decide it here.
Okay, folks, we are going to continue with the rest of our village board meeting, various things coming up, so those that need to leave, that's all fine. You won't be noticed too much if you leave, but that's okay. We're going to continue on. Thank you. All right. I have two more things I want to discuss. We have a... We have a tie maker in town called Tie Mart, and they have done something very generous for us, and I'm going to read this. It talks about their business, but they have given us some ties and scarves. They have given us, as a village, let me see here, 60 ties and 40 scarves, and they have Mundaline's logo really kind of shrunk up and made into this nice attractive pattern for both ties and scars, and what we're doing is we're using these to give to visitors when they come to Village Hall, developers sometimes, and potential, you know, business owners, folks that want to move in, and it's just a nice little gesture on their part, and it's something we give away. So I wanted to just read this, because this is just a great gesture on their part. So this is a tie mart.com. Mike Martica is the owner, and they are at 525 Morris Avenue. Tie Mart is a Mundaline family-owned business selling neckties and accessories online. Now, get this. On a weekly basis, Tie Mart ships thousands of its own brand of ties worldwide to businesses, restaurants, caterers, hotels, church choirs, schools and universities, event planners, movie studios, movie studios, theme parks, and individuals, among others. The company began in the home of Mike and Darlene Martica in 2004. When it outgrew their home in 2008, they moved the company to its current location on Morris Avenue. As the business continued to grow, their four children and son-in-law joined the company full-time. Today, Tie Mart employs 15 people. When Mundaline's Tie Mart learned about the village's comprehensive branding campaign, the company wanted to find a way to get involved and give back to Mundaline. To this end, president and owner Mike Martica contacted village administrator John Libedo about donating ties and scarves sporting the new logo. After several proposed designs, the village settled on a subtle, repeating star design for the branded items. Each tie and scarf also is customized with a tag bearing the village's logo and tagline, "Start Here, Star Here." So they have more. If you want to buy them, you can go to the website and buy... They have 284 ties left and about 183 scarves. So I think that's a great gesture on their part, and so you can go check them out at Tie Mart and, you know, go buy some, so, and get the brand out there, right? Super. Finally, for my report, I wanted to call a meeting, and this is a public hearing regarding the proposed removal of a planned commission member, and I want to make sure we choose a date that everyone can attend. Now, we don't know about trustee Sullivan right now, but can everyone be at the February 23rd? This would be at 6:30, a half hour before the normal village board meeting. Everyone going to be there? Okay. Very good. Well, the next village's board meeting will be on the 9th. We'll make sure that trustee Sullivan can attend, all right? And so that closes out that part of that report, that part of that business, and also my report, okay? All right, moving on to trustee reports. Public Works Committee, trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We don't have any motions for tonight. Mr. Boucher, anything out there that...
Other than being grateful that I work in the Midwest, not Northeast tonight? No, nothing.
All right, then I have nothing else for my report tonight.
Okay. Moving on to Finance Committee. Trustee Sullivan is not present. Trustee Meyer, back to you.
No, no.
Well, yes and no, because while I am second in line, because of the nature of the motion, I'm handing it off to trustee Abernathy.
Okay. Trustee Abernathy.
Okay, so tonight, under Finance, we have an AT&amp;T bill payment. A motion to approve the payment of bills as indicated on the disbursement pending report dated 1/26/15 for AT&amp;T for invoices totaling $3,224.62.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by trustee Kim. Discussion? All right, Mr. Flynn, please take the roll.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Meyer.
Abstain.
Semple.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Oh, and I just cannot go as eloquently as Mr. Trustee Sullivan does about the bill pay, but I will note that we are going to be approving payments of $1 million.
Top five.
Yeah, I know we're doing those, but... No, that's okay. All right, but thank you. So I'm done with trust... With the finance report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Public Safety Committee. Trustee Semple.
Nothing on the agenda this evening, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to turn it over to Chief Gunther first, and, Chief, you had a great event last Tuesday night. It was a police community forum. You want to give us all a summary for those that haven't seen it in the newspaper, and any other events you have upcoming or have had recently?
It was a well-attended event, where we kind of talked about what's taking place in the United States and really all over the world, as you look at things that are going on, and kind of bringing it down to what's taking place here in Mundaline and Keene on the relationships between the police department and the community. And our attempt was to personalize it, in a sense, and help people to remember that, you know, the people that wear these uniforms are the same of... Just like any other people sitting in the audience, or we're, you know, families, we're fathers, we're daughters, we're sons. We bleed, we cry, we laugh, we do everything that, you know, you all do. So when you deal with us next time, understand that much of what we do, we do for a reason, and we tried to help explain some of those things, but to personalize it for people so that they, you know, kind of understood that there was a name behind the badge and hopefully helped to break that, some of those barriers that are down. It was well-received. It received some very good media coverage, and the questions were fantastic, and that was in a sense... I think it may actually even spin into a couple of other presentations at other locations that were requested, and so we're looking at that now.
Thanks, Chief. And this was done with the HRC, and actually Chairman Reimer came up with the initial idea, I believe, correct?
Absolutely correct. He approached me about the idea and thought it was a fantastic one.
Anything else, Chief?
No.
Chief Sashko.
Thank you. All kinds of good stuff going on. We had an absolutely wonderful blood drive on Saturday, 85 units for an off-cycle blood drive. It's 255 lives that are affected by that, and so really proud of the community and neighboring people that came from Vernon Hills and Wakanda, who's having a drive this Friday, so, oops, but, so it was really a great turnout, and very impressed with... We had, I think, probably almost a dozen first timers, so really just a wonderful day. Exhausting at best. We golded at 50, so when you have 35 extra people show up, it's a busy day without a doubt. Our next drive is just in a couple of weeks, which would seem unusual, but that's our normal cycle. Again, we're in this period of time where the holidays and the sub-zero temperatures we had earlier this month really took its toll on blood donations throughout the Chicagoland area. I want to give a special shout-out, because Rick is here, and I want to thank you for the coverage you provided for us, because that really helped a lot. A lot of people commented about seeing it in the paper, and there was another article today as a wrap-up article from the drive, and if you haven't gone and seen that, it's really impressive, so thank you very much. It really helps in the community. We had a new arrival at the station today. Our engine that we ordered almost a year ago showed up today. Yeah, not a baby, but close. It's our baby, so... But our new engine showed up today, so if you happen to be out and about, certainly welcome everybody to stop by and see it. We probably won't put it into service in talking to Deputy Chief Leide till... Our target's March 1st. By the time we get it outfitted with everything, but it really turned out very nice, and again, thanks to the board for your support, for having state-of-the-art equipment. We can't do our jobs without it. And then last Tuesday, we had our after-the-fire program for... As a post-incident for the Lachloman explosion, and had a very nice turnout from the community, probably about 60 to 65 people. I know we were overlapping with the police event. It was just a scheduling difficulty that we had, but really walked through the nuances of what we do when we arrive on the scene, and then taking that through that process of the investigation, all the way to preparatory pieces that we, you know, we tell people learn, you know, videotape the contents of your home, and take pictures of what you have, and, you know, those vital documents being put in fire safes and things like that. They really make a difference when you have a fire that's half the magnitude of what we experience, so... So it was well-received by the community and the neighborhood, and it was... It really turned out very well, and that's the design of that program, is it's not to be a community-wide event, but it's more for the intimacy of that neighborhood and what they can expect over the next, you know, year in some cases, and it's not uncommon. I know we're pretty close to demolition. I'm looking at Pete, and I think we've got permits pulled, and so it'll come down pretty quickly here, pretty soon, so a lot of cooperation with the insurance companies, so it was great. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
To add to that, because I wasn't in attendance in that, a lot of the residents were very appreciative of it, and I know one of the new things that surprised many people was about the building code insurance rider, that that's not part of the insurance, and we also discussed that at our CERT meeting the following night, and there are a lot of people that are very unaware of that, and so that was really good information.
What trustee Meyer's bringing up is, I guess, for the TV audiences, if you have not checked your insurance policy, if your home's built back in the '50s, which that area was, it'll be rebuilt to that code standard at that point, and to meet the rest of the code upgrades now to replace and bring the house up to standards, you have to pay the difference of that if you don't have a code rider. So there's a building code rider you can get with your insurance company that will provide you with that continuum, it's kind of like with cars, where you can get a new car, even though it might be two or three years old. So it is important...
Our next drive is just in a couple of weeks, which would seem unusual, but that's our normal cycle. Again, we're in this period of time where the holidays and the sub-zero temperatures we had earlier this month really took its toll on, on blood donations throughout the Chicago Land area. I want to give a special shout-out because Rick is here, and I want to thank you for the coverage you provided for us because that really helped a lot. A lot of people commented about seeing it in the paper, and there was another article today as a wrap-up article from the drive, and if you haven't gone and seen that, it's really impressive, so thank you very much, that really helps in the community. We had a new arrival at the station today, our engine that we ordered almost a year ago showed up today. Yeah, not a baby, but close, it's our baby, so, but our new engine showed up today, so if you happen to be out and about, certainly welcome everybody to stop by and see it. We probably won't put it into service in talking to Deputy Chief Leide till, our target's March 1st, by the time we get it outfitted with everything, but really turned out very nice, and again, thanks to the board for your support for having state-of-the-art equipment, we can't do our jobs without it. And then last Tuesday, we had our after-the-fire program for, as a post-incident for the Lockloman explosion, and had a very nice turnout from the community of probably about 60 to 65 people. I know we, we were overlapping with the police event, it was just a scheduling difficulty that we had, but really walked through the nuances of what we do when we arrive on the scene, and then taking that through that process of the investigation all the way to preparatory pieces that we, you know, we tell people learn, you know, videotape the contents of your home and take pictures of what you have, and, you know, those vital documents being put in fire safes and things like that, they really make a difference when you have a fire that's half the magnitude of what we experience, so. So it was well-received by the community and the neighborhood, and it was, it really turned out very well, and that's the design of that program, is it's not to be a community-wide event, but it's more for the intimacy of that neighborhood and what they can expect over the next, you know, year in some cases, and it's not uncommon. I know we're pretty close to demolition, I'm looking at Pete, and I think we've got permits pulled, and so it'll come down pretty quickly here, pretty soon, so, a lot of cooperation with the insurance companies, so it was great. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
To add to that, because I was in attendance in that, a lot of the residents were very appreciative of it, and I know one of the new things that surprised many people was about the building code insurance rider, that that's not part of the insurance, and we also discussed that at our CERT meeting the following night, and there are a lot of people that are very unaware of that, and so that was really good information.
What trustee Meyer's bringing up is, I guess, for the TV audiences, if you have not checked your insurance policy, if your home's built back in the 50s, which that area was, it'll be rebuilt to that code standard at that point, and to meet the rest of the code upgrades now to replace and bring the house up to standards, you have to pay the difference of that if you don't have a code rider. So there is a building code rider you can get with your insurance company that will provide you with that continuum, it's kind of like with cars where you can get a new car, even though it might be two or three years old, you, so it is important, depending on your loss, it can mean a big difference in cost, so.
Alright, thank you. Okay, that takes us to trustee Voss, Community and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we get to any of the motions, I just wanted to announce that we have two new businesses in town. Heartland Mediation opened at 1444 South Butterfield Road. They offer stress relief, inner peace, and self-improvement through the Heartland Meditation Method, and also AJ Auto Service opened at 1282 Town Lane Road, which does light mechanical work. And as always, we ask you to support our local businesses, make sure that you've picked up your Shop Mundeline sticker when you eat and shop around town. So tonight, we have a motion on the agenda regarding competition tattoo and custom cycles. Do we, is the petitioner here? Let's start with that. Okay, thank you. So I understand that we have some legal information?
Yes, I was provided today with a very recent decision of the Federal District Court for our district, the Northern District of Illinois, that was rendered in August of 2014, that involved a tattoo parlor as well as a zoning issue, and I advised Mr. Libado that I was going to recommend to the board that it pass on this particular item until the meeting on February 9th, to give me an opportunity to review that decision and advise the board as to the implications of that decision with respect to this particular item.
Hmm, so...
You're asking it to be...
Deferred until February 9th.
Is that going to cause a problem for you with your lease?
No, ma'am, I'm living in the world of the board.
Okay, so in that case, I will make a motion, right, we have to motion to...
To defer the matter until February 9th.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to defer this matter until February 9th.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Abernathy, discussion? Okay, Mr. Flynn, please take the role.
Voss.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Did you have a question?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Just sat down, though.
Then you're done.
Yep, thank you.
Well, we'll see in a couple of weeks. Thank you for your understanding, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, trustee Voss. Next up, Communication and Marketing Committee, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no motions tonight. Mr. Libado, is there any updates you would like to mention?
No, I don't believe there is.
Okay, then that's all there is, nothing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, trustee Abernathy, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee.
No, I have, just to say that I will be attending at the beginning of February, the, I want to say CMAP, and I can't think of the acronym, the...
Chicago Metropolitan Area Planning.
Yes, that's it, that one. I'll be going to that for the Land Use Committee. I've already replied that I will be there the beginning of February for Route 53, so if there's any updates, I will let everyone know. And Mr. Boucher, do you have anything? Salt supply still good?
Yeah, last time I checked, we're still full barn.
Okay, well, that's good. Alright, that's all I have for this evening.
Very good, let's go to other reports, and, let's see, this concerns an architecture design contract for KSN. Before I ask for the motion, Mr. Libado, did you want to give us an overview?
Sure, I can give a brief overview. This is part of the KSN tenant improvement. We've been working with the Dobbins Group, architectural firm, from the beginning, and this is part of the overall cost that the board had approved several meetings ago, I think, December 8th, maybe.
So we need a motion to authorize the village administrator to sign the proposed dated January 7th, 2015, from the Dobbins Group, in the amount of $43,500 in approved purchase order for Saint.
So moved.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by trustee Kim, discussion? Mr. Flynn, please call the role.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving right along, that takes us to the scheduled business, the omnibus vote items. We have items one through five. Does any trustee wish to pull one or more of these items from the omnibus vote list?
I'd like to pull number five, please.
Trustee Kim wants to pull number five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Number one, please.
Trustee Voss, number one. Anyone else? Okay, so then I need a motion to pass items two, three, and four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Voss, discussion? Okay, Mr. Flynn, please call the role.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Motion carries. That takes us to trustee Voss, number one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we are going out to bid, again, for electricity for the village?
No, yeah, for our power, our large accounts.
Okay, so do we have a goal of what we're gonna, what we're seeking?
The lowest bid, and we think it'll be somewhere in the six to seven cent range, based on the market.
And, do we, you want to, so this is...
Sure, I can elaborate a little bit more.
Yes.
This is, we previously, we've done this in the past. Our last pricing contract was a three-year contract. We had that with Exelon. Exelon was subsequently purchased by Constellation, so now that accounts with Constellation. So that three-year pricing contract is up, and we'll rebid this at this time, and this is the bid that we do through NYMAC, through the Northern, no, through the whatever, NYMAC. And so the way this works is the bids are only good for 24 hours, so Charlie has reviewed the contracts for the three bidders, and the three bidders are Constellation, MC Squared, and Dyn Energy, and those, those companies will be solicited to bid when NYMAC feels that the price has reached its lowest point, and that somewhat of an educated guess will get those bids, and once they're opened and the low bid is recommended, we will have 24 hours to sign that contract, which is the reason for this motion, which is to authorize John to sign those contracts as recommended by NYMAC, either a one, two, or three-year contract.
So, and the reason that we would do a one-year contract is because if rates come in really high and we think that they'll go down, we'd only do a one-year contract?
Yes, we would compare, we'll take NYMAC's recommendation. For example, last time, the one-year rate was a little lower than the three-year rate, but when you looked at the future of energy pricing, we chose the three-year, a little higher at that time, but over the three-year contract, it was much lower than where prices ended up going.
Okay, and so the village can't go back out to bid for the village, for our residents until...
I think it's March or April.
Of this year?
Of 2015, yes. We have to be, it's a 12-month period, you have to be with, if you go back to ComEd, you have to stay with them for 12 months.
And didn't we not go back to them until July?
Well, but the bids were, you do the bids prior to the contract, so we, if you recall, we bid last March for our contract that was up at the end of June, I think.
Okay, so, so this is only for our village power, our...
This is for four, four large accounts.
Okay.
The wastewater treatment plant and several pumping stations. We also have bids for small accounts that don't qualify, small amounts fall under a different pricing structure, and they don't qualify for the large account, so NYMAC will help us obtain pricing for those small accounts, and we also have a streetlight account, and streetlight accounts are dawn to dusk, they're not metered, so they fall under a different pricing structure.
Okay.
Those will come up, I think, in, they're all up this year, so I think they'll come up in the March timeframe.
Okay, well, with that very thorough explanation, I'll make a motion to authorize the village administrator or his designee to execute a power purchase contract for either one year, two years, or three years with either Constellation, New Energy Inc., Dyn Energy Energy Services LLC, or MC Squared Energy Services LLC.
Second.
Subject to attorney review and the rest of that.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by trustee Abernathy, discussion?
Can I add one comment? I would just want to add to that, discussion is that we are not charged for electricity for our administrative, I don't know if some of the new trustees know that, for example, this building, we're not charged for the electricity, it's part of the franchise agreement, that's the way it operates, but the enterprise fund, like the water sewer, that's a kind of a for-profit kind of business, if you will, and it generates its own revenues and pays for it, so there are a number of administrative offices that we are not charged, and so I just wanted to maybe let some of the newer trustees know that.
Good, anyone else? Okay, Mr. Flynn, please take the role.
Voss.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Motion carries. Takes us to item five, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just had two items I wanted to ask about. One of them says patrol rifles, and I was just wondering what those were, but I don't know who to ask. I think it would be the police, okay?
It would be me.
Maybe, it's a skunk patrol.
If they're going in the public works trucks, we got some trouble.
It may have been a skunk patrol, I know.
They are exactly what they say, they're patrol rifles, they are rifles that go in each of the squad cars. The ones that we currently have are 12 to 13 years old, and the money that you see here is part of a replacement plan to begin to replace those out of the vehicles in increments.
Okay, thank you. Second item, also yours, is, well, this one I knew was yours because it said squad car. So there's five new squad cars, and they're each about $26,000, and I was wondering if this was a budgeted expense, and, well, that's question number one.
Yes, it is.
And then secondly, how come, just for my knowledge, how come it's not like a bidded procedure?
It is.
It is?
Yes.
And is this through the...
This is through this state bid, this is through the Illinois state bid, and the bid is awarded to a dealer that has the particular vehicle that we are interested in, and that's where we make the purchase from. There's a couple of those throughout the state, this is the Illinois management bid.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And I guess I'll make that motion. The motion to approve the payment of bills as indicated in the governing body report for the period between January 13, 2015, and ending January 26, 2015, in the amount of $1,011,090.85.
Motion by trustee Kim.
Second.
Second by trustee Voss, discussion? Okay, Mr. Flynn, please take the role.
Kim.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Motion carries. Alright, we're on the pace to maybe set a record, not close, knock on wood somewhere. Wait a minute, there's no wood here. Village staff reports, village administrator, Mr. Libado, anything?
I have no report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Village attorney, Mr. Marino.
I have no report, and I understand there's no need for an executive session.
Okay. Village clerk isn't here, Mr. Flynn, anything?
No report.
There you go, alright. Any other business from any trustee wishing to bring up other business at this point? Nope? Okay, then I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion by trustee Meyer, second by trustee Kim, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, thank you very much, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.